Welcome, everyone. Before we call the meeting to order, we will have a prayer by Councilwoman Ward, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Dear Lord, for each mind and heart that fills the presence of this room and attending online, we are grateful. May we be mindful of the outcome of our decisions and may our intentions align with the goodwill of all in our city. Give us the knowledge and courage to make decisions that will protect the health, safety, and well-being of our entire community. Let us pray for all those who are assisting and protecting the citizens of our city and country, our first responders, healthcare providers, police, and military, but also our neighbors, those who understand that others may be struggling right now and are taking the time to reach out to them. In closing, we pray for all those who have lost their battle with COVID-19. May the love of family and friends surround them and give them strength in the days ahead. Our hearts reach out to yours with love, with sympathy, and peace. In your name we pray.
Amen. Welcome, everyone, to the Monday, September 21st, 2020 City Council meeting. For those that would like to call in, the phone number is 404-397-1516. The meeting number is 146-208-3736, and the meeting password is 1234. And that information, along with the agenda, is available at JeffersonCityMo.gov. Mrs. Donaldson, roll call, please.
Fitzwater?
Present.
Graham?
Here.
Hensley?
Present.
Hussey?
Here.
Kimna?
Here.
Lester?
Here.
Schreiber?
Present.
Vote?
Here.
Ward?
Here.
Wiseman?
Present.
And Councilwoman Wiseman is joining us by phone this evening, and her absence is -- we wanted to make sure she wanted to share that it is not because she didn't want to be here that she is joining us. So just because you don't see her, I want you to know that she's on, and she has a contact to a contact who's being tested. So she wanted to do the prudent thing and wait until those test results came back and ask for my guidance, and I suggested that she stay home in light of that and waiting for her contact to a contact to receive their results. So I think we can all respect that decision, and I just want to highlight that because I appreciate people like Councilwoman Wiseman taking others into account, and if they can join something like that virtually in this case, I think it's a good example, and also reminding people, stay home when they're sick and monitor and always keep up with that. So Councilwoman Wiseman, we appreciate you joining us by phone this evening. Item three, I will ask for a motion to adopt the agenda, moving item 15B to be taken up after presentations from the gallery. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion?
(Crosstalk).
Yes.
I'd like to call in a question. It 10B, the new number for 15B? Well, we just reordered it. What number will it be now?
15B, which is the resolution for the marker, item -- the Resolution 2020-12 under item 15, under Resolution 15B, would be moved to 10B.
Okay. Well, my contention is that I don't think 10B should be on our agenda tonight as a resolution. I can cite four examples of when commissions and individuals were led to believe that this issue was going to go through a city committee, not through an advisory committee or commission, and my comments in no way are to diminish the role and the value of our commissions because they do an amazing job. But this is an important issue for our community. There have been a lot of responses, both pro and con, and frankly, based on the four comments, and I can go through the comments and who made them, they were city representatives. People were led to believe, commissions were led to believe, that this would go through a committee. I've been on calls where that has been indicated that it would either go to the Administration Committee or the Public Works Committee, and I'm just curious that how 96 hours ago, or at least I was informed when I got my packet, that this is a resolution now, and I'm just curious what changed that process when direction came out of this building that it was more than likely to go as an ordinance to a committee where the 10 of us would have an opportunity to question. I mean, I unfortunately don't have an opportunity. I'm not the liaison to either of those two committees, but it's not our role to be voting members or questioning members anyways. But I have never had an opportunity to question anybody on this. I know people, the public, are here tonight, but I do not think that's an equitable system, and again, based on comments that have been made at the Human Relations Commission by two different individuals at the, I guess, the third meeting of the Historic Preservation Commission, and then an email that came out of this office with some indication of the direction. So I challenge why that issue or why this issue has come to us as a resolution. I'm just curious how it got put in that format.
Councilman Fitzwater, what I'll do is ask that question of our city attorney, Ryan Mollman, and the reason for the actual movement on the agenda is simply a procedural one to, with most people being here to discuss that item, so that we could allow them to leave council chambers with our crowd size, although there are still empty seats and would encourage people to space out as much as they can, but certainly so that we could take up whatever may be on the agenda pertaining to that item so that most of the audience would be able to leave after it by moving it up on the agenda.
Well, just if I --
However, you're talking more about whether having it even as a resolution.
I don't think it ought to be 10B, 15B, or any B. I don't -- I do not think it is appropriate to be on this agenda tonight, and I'm curious why it's a resolution.
So that's the second part of the question. I would ask Councilman -- or Counselor Mollman to, how would we handle that if there are council members that do not want to take it up as a resolution form?
Um, any council member that did not want to hear the measure tonight could make a motion to amend the agenda, to remove it from the agenda. That would probably be the appropriate procedure.
And at what time on the agenda would they make that motion?
Anytime before the resolution comes up. I think probably right now, since we're voting on the agenda, would probably be the most appropriate time. So that would be a procedural motion, but city code provides that any council member can have any resolution or ordinance placed onto the agenda.
Councilman Graham?
And council member, sending it to which committee would it go back to?
Well, the reference that I've heard at open meetings, and I've been telling people since August 21st, you know, because people are interested in this issue, and they come up to me and they say, "Well, I heard on a committee, on a commission call that it was going to either the Administration Committee and/or Public Works, or possibly both of those." I think those are both. I mean, I've gone through the direction of both of those committees. I think it fits under either one of those, but at least five of us sit there and have an opportunity to talk about this very controversial, is not the word I'd like to, but this issue that has energized some excitement in the community. So either or both of those are okay by me.
Well, I'm not against it. I'm just trying to see which committee are you, if you put a motion out there, which committee will it go to is my question.
I would take the direction of our city attorney. Either or both of those would be countable with me. If you want to specific just one of them, then I would take whatever the city attorney recommends.
Regardless of which is decided with everybody who is here to testify, we will move forward with allowing the testimony, of course, but Councilwoman Ward and then Counselor Mollman.
I have attended eight public meetings on this topic. There were times where there was a suggestion of what the next step would be. I took the recommendation of legal, of what was the route we could go. Those in the commission were aware that it was going to the council, and that it was put on the public agenda that it was coming to council. I can identify probably 90% of these individuals in this chamber that have attended previous public hearings and have spoke. So I think instead of kicking this down the road even longer, that we should hear this resolution tonight.
Mr. Mollman?
Yeah, one other procedural note. There could also be a motion to send it to a committee at the time that it's ready for approval otherwise, so that could be another option. So instead of a motion to approve, a motion to send it back to committee, that could be also an appropriate motion at the time that it's ready to be voted on. As to the location of a potential committee, I think either one works, Administration or Public Works. You know, this is about control of city property. Also, that happens to also be in the right of way, so I think either committee is fine. I think it's just kind of a matter of which committee wants to take it on and do the work of holding the meeting on it.
So perhaps an option would be to move forward with the original motion to move it under 10, to have the resolution fall under presentations from the gallery after the testimony's finished, so that perhaps if council hears testimony, they could make the decision at that time whether or not to either move forward after hearing testimony, if they want to move forward with a vote, or move forward with moving it to a committee. Would that be agreeable? Councilman Fitzwater?
Well, I would just like to respond to the comment, and then I'll answer your question. I mean, I can go back to the notes. Fortunately, the Historic Preservation Commission takes very meticulous notes, which I appreciate. The first one you're going to have to indulge me on, it was the meeting of the Commission on Human Relations. These are my notes. They're dated that day, so they were taken at the meeting. But there was a question raised as to what happens now. It says HBC has been requested to revisit this issue, which it was going back on the 26th, I believe, to historic preservation, but that more than likely this would be sent to a council committee, and they referenced the Administration or Public Works Committees. Then at the Historic Preservation Commission, there was comments made by, and I'm not sure if he is current city employee, he was responding as a member of the public. Again, a question, and again, they take very meticulous notes, it would likely go to a council committee for more discussion and vote before it gets passed on to the council as a whole. The liaison to that committee also made a comment at the same meeting that asked a question, and comments were that I have the same thoughts as Mr. Wolford, that it would either go to the Administration Committee or Public Works and Planning Committee before it did anything. Then there's an email that came out of this building on September 3rd that said, "I just talked to a member of the public," and I'm not going to mention a member of the public, "but commissions having the discussions currently are advisory in nature and have a formal process, and as a formal process would need to be initiated through the appropriate city council committee." So I just, I mean, those are not my words, other than the first one. I referenced the fact that those are my handwritten notes, but I just don't understand what happened between that time and tonight. I'm looking at a resolution that I got 96 hours ago. Nobody around this table in official capacity, as an elected official, has had an opportunity to respond to this. Now, if you're attending commission meetings, you're not there technically as a voting member of this body, and I'm just, my question is, should this be a resolution or an ordinance that ought to go through the appropriate procedure before this council makes action? That's my question.
And this decision is completely up to council and how they want to proceed, so if anybody wants to make a motion now, Ryan, Mr. Mollman laid out how that can be done. So if somebody wants to make that motion, we'll do it, or if they want to wait till after 10. Regardless, we're going to have testimony, so I will leave that up to council. What, Councilman?
Well, I'll make the motion then that whatever item number this is, 15B or 10B, be taken off of the agenda and that this issue be referred to the Administration and the Public Works Committees for review and report back to the council at the appropriate time.
Okay, there's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion on the motion? Roll call, please.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Hussey?
Nay.
Kimna?
Aye.
Lester?
Nay.
Is that a nay?
No.
Thank you. Schreiber?
Aye.
Vote?
Aye.
Ward?
Nay.
Wiseman? She voted no. Six ayes, four noes.
So if I'm understanding correctly, then that passes to remove the Resolution 2020-12 and put it, or send it to a committee. Is that correct? What was that, Steve?
Two committees, correct? Not with the motion you had, but admin and public works.
So the motion included both? Okay. So that passes. So with that being said, if I'm understanding this correctly, we will not be voting on Resolution 2020-12 this evening. However, in light of the fact that it was on the agenda and out of respect for everybody who is here to give testimony, we will move forward with that testimony. Is that okay with council? Any other comments? Now, all that being said, we did have a motion on the table to adopt the agenda, so help me out, Ryan.
Since 15B was removed from the agenda, I believe that the agenda is ready to be approved as amended.
Okay, so item three, do we have a motion to adopt the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion pass? Oh, okay, let's do a roll call on that, please. Roll call, please.
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Hussey?
Nay.
Kimna?
Aye.
Lester?
Nay.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Vote?
Aye.
Ward?
Nay.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Okay, the motion is approved for adoption of agenda. Item four, miscellaneous agenda items. We have, I believe, on the line Ciara Thomas, who is our Emergency Management Director, to announce September as National Preparedness Month. Welcome, Ciara. Are you on there? Can you hear us?
Yes, Mayor, I'm here. I'm going to apologize in advance if I end up cutting anybody off, because I've been listening and it's been a little spotty, so I just want to apologize in advance.
Okay, we can hear you just fine.
Okay, perfect. So as they are noted, September is National Preparedness Month, and what we've been doing here at the office specifically is just trying to release some things on social media, excuse me, in between updating our current plans. I just recently, as in the end of last week, sent off our LEOP, which is our Local Emergency Operations Plan. I sent that off to SEMA for approval. That's supposed to be updated every two to three years, I believe, so we got that taken care of. Excuse me. Sheriff Wheeler and I went ahead and scheduled an LEPC meeting, which hasn't, we haven't had one since, I believe, January, so that's back up and running. Sheriff Wheeler and I are also working on getting the CERT, which is Community Emergency Response Team, up and running, and he's going to be using a lot of his posse members to head up that project. But it's a really good, it's a really good system, really good project, and it gets the community involved, which, I mean, everybody wants to do. Outside of that, we do have, we're going to participate in the regional exercise with Region F. Did I cut somebody off?
No.
No, okay, good, sorry. We have our region exercise on the 30th, and that's where we'll pull all 13 counties in together and act as though it's an active response exercise, and we're actually going to have that at the EOC there at the JCPD Training Room. Let me see what else I have here. Go through the notes, I don't want to skip anything. Our Cole County Hazard Mitigation Plan has started back up. Regional Planning Commission is completing that for us, and we're working in conjunction with them. We had our first meeting, geez, it's been two weeks ago, maybe, three weeks? We had it at the Cole County Fire Station, and we had actually a fairly decent turnout, which was awesome. So if you guys, anybody there in the room currently, if you can make those meetings, it's incredibly important, because not only does it give us ideas on different projects that we need or could use within the city or county, but our time that, like, signing in and showing up for the meeting is used as in-kind funds, so it eats up like the $6,000 that the county would have to pay regularly back to SEMA. So it's really important. If anybody there is interested in showing up, Mayor, I can go ahead and send you the invite, and then you can send it out as you, as you like, if that's okay.
That would be great. I've been writing down some of those meeting dates, but if you can send that out through email, and we'll get that distributed to council.
Okay, perfect. And also, the Great Shakeout Earthquake Drill is coming up next month. Let me check my calendar here real fast, and I won't tell you guys something wrong. I believe it is on, okay, I don't see it on my calendar. Oh, I see, okay. So October the 15th at 10:00 a.m. is the Great Shakeout Exercise, and that's going to be nationwide. I signed our county up for it, and I'll go ahead and include that information in that email as well. I couldn't hear that.
I think there was just some interference.
Okay. And if anybody is interested, we only have one week left in the National Preparedness, but you can go to ready.gov/September, and it gives you a breakdown, basically, of Week 1, 2, 3, and 4, and social media, let me see here, it gives you different resources, like for social media toolkit, how to send out messaging, PSAs, videos, things of that nature. This last week is teach youth about preparedness, so Tracy and I are trying to gather some information that's more youth-friendly to post on Facebook and try to get that out. But outside of that, I guess we're just staying busy. Do you guys have any questions for me?
Any questions for Ms. Thomas? Ciara, thank you for giving us that report. As we know, being a community that has seen a natural disaster with the tornado and flooding and hail and many others, we understand the importance of preparedness, so getting us ready with September being National Preparedness Month is very helpful, so I would think and ask and reiterate that we all go to ready.gov/September and keep up with all those things that we should be doing to keep our community safe. So Ms. Thomas, thank you for your time, and we will let you get off the line then, and we will all work on being prepared. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. I appreciate the invite.
You're welcome. Okay, item five, public hearings. We have a rezoning in Bill 2020-31.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, changing, amending, and modifying the zoning map of the zoning code of the City of Jefferson by rezoning 2.98 acres located at 2715 Route CC from C1 Neighborhood Commercial to RS2 Low Density Residential.
Mr. Barron?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This property is located about 800 feet south of Route C, on Route CC, shown up on the screen. It's currently zoned a C1, which is a Neighborhood Commercial zoning district. This is a property owner petitioned request to rezone the property to an RS2, a single-family residential zoning district, a down zoning. The purpose for the request is to actually put in place the standard zoning buffer yard separations that would, that are granted through the zoning code between zoning districts to the neighboring C2 general commercial property, which is a landscaping business, and is currently in the process of putting together a development plan for the vacant, undeveloped property just north of this property. This down zoning would also benefit the property in that it's currently used in a single-family residential manner, and therefore is a non-conforming or grandfathered use within a commercial zoning district. So rezoning it to a single family would remove that non-conformity. It was reviewed by the Planning and Zoning Commission at their meeting of August 13th and recommended for approval on a vote of six to zero. I'd be happy to answer any questions the commission, or the council may have prior to opening the public hearing.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Barron? Okay, thank you. Seeing none, we will open up the public hearing portion, and is there anyone that would like to speak on Bill 2020-31? Okay, seeing none, we will close the public hearing portion and take up the bill. Is there any council deliberation? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Hensley?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Vote?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Bill passes. Item six, we have no appointments this evening. Item seven, presentations from staff consultants invited guests, we have none. Item eight, announcements. I would encourage everyone to go to JeffersonCityMo.gov for a complete meeting calendar. Are there any updates from our four standing committees? Yes?
There will not be a Finance Committee meeting this Thursday.
Okay, so cancel that one. Any other committee meetings? And I know with our motion that just came forward, the audience may be asking, when is the next, let's see, Administration and Public Works, correct? Do we have those dates set? Or who, I don't know who would have that.
We do, Mayor. The next Public Works Committee meeting is Thursday, October 8th at 7:30 a.m., I would assume in this room.
And maybe we would ask the public to visit the website, JeffersonCityMo.gov, in case, I know some of our committee meetings have been virtual to help with crowd size, so that might be a decision to be made.
And I would, it looks on my calendar that the Administration Committee meets on that Wednesday, October 7th at 7:30, most likely in this space as well, so.
Okay.
I've not talked to staff about a Public Works agenda just yet to see. Sometimes those get lengthy with items, and so just to make sure that we don't create a four-hour meeting.
Okay. So this is somewhat tentative, so I would put that out there, because as we know, things could change, and this hasn't been decided, this motion just passed this evening to make the change, but tentative, Administration, Wednesday, October 7th, 7:30 a.m., and then tentative, Public Works and Planning, October 8th, 7:30 a.m. Whether or not those will be virtual, and if they are virtual, they would likely be WebEx, which allows the video option as well. So I would say tune into JeffersonCityMo.gov when it gets closer, and we will have that information. Any other committee reports or meeting announcements this evening? Okay, item B, the large, item bulky pickup, that's something we've been waiting for, right? Mr. Barron?
Yes, it is. We are excited to have this upon us, as with regret that it had to be rescheduled from the normal time in the spring. But there are two dates that are scheduled. The city is broken into two pieces, as is done every year, with Highway 54 being the dividing line. Those properties that are west of Highway 54, the date is Monday, September 28th, so residents should have items placed at the curb who live west of Highway 54 on that Monday, September 28th. And those east of Highway 54, the date is Monday, October 5th, so one week later. There is a flyer located on the city's main page on the website, and so if any residents have any questions as to what can or cannot be placed on the curb, direct them first to that flyer. They still have questions, so they can certainly call the City Hall Front Desk at 634-6410.
Thank you. Any questions about that? Okay, thank you. And item C, Missouri 2021 Bicentennial Update. You all have at your place a couple of items for the bicentennial. If you're not already following, Missouri 2021 on Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram, August of '21 will be here before we know it. So they have a few things that if you all ever do any type of speaking engagements for scout troops or schools, that you can always ask a trivia question and give out a pencil or something. We do have more of these available, so we would encourage council to get out there and share that. share that. I have a few other announcements. Building Community Bridges has mentioned that they're having a paint party, October 3rd and 4th from 9 to 5. So if you're interested, you, uh, reach out to Building Community Bridges to participate in that event. Um, a few other announcements, um, for absentee and in-person voting. I wanted to call your attention to, um, the Secretary of State's website, and you can find this handy voter chart that tells you all of the ways to vote. If you go to the Secretary of State's website, which is sos.mo.gov, click on the voting link, and then click on the 2020 Voting Options Chart, and then you'll see here in-person voting, absentee, in-person, other forms of absentee, and mail-in voting, and all of your questions right here answered. So I will also announce absentee voting begins tomorrow, September 22nd through November 2nd. So keep that in mind. We want everybody to vote and know exactly how they can vote. So, uh, that information is all, again, sos.mo.gov. And a few other announcements. The Tunnel to Towers was held on Saturday, which is a 5K, held, uh, in remembrance of a firefighter who had, uh, passed away on 9/11, uh, doing his job to run back to the towers to save others, and so that has turned into a legacy of an organization that raises money to help fallen, um, police officers, firefighters, and military in helping them pay off their mortgages if they pass on the line of duty. So that was a very successful event, and I'm happy to announce that Jefferson City Fire Department won the fastest firehouse again. So Chief Schofield, yay! Now, please pass on our congratulations. I know when they do the trophy presentation, they normally come here, but would you like to add anything?
No, we'll be happy to bring that trophy back to its rightful place here, to you, Madam Mayor, shortly. In the next few months, we'll do that presentation.
Well, we would be very honored to accept that, and for those of you that didn't get to see it, they actually run in their full gear, they do the 5K, uh, with, with everything, and there's a lot of added weight, uh, to, to do that. It's very impressive. We appreciate everybody who supported that, and we're extremely proud of Jefferson City Fire Department, so, thank you. And also, the Fourth Annual Stair Climb is October 10th, and that is typically held at the Jefferson Building, where they climb the amount of stairs that would have been equivalent to reaching the top of the World Trade Center. So I believe you would go to the top about 13 times. But anyway, instead, being, uh, wanting to have an outdoor event so more people can socially distance, they have moved that event to Lincoln University Football Stadium. So again, that is the Fourth Annual State Fire Marshal's Memorial Stair Climb on Saturday, October 10th. A couple other announcements, um, Guns &amp; Hoses just announced that they are having a virtual hockey game on October 17th in the morning. You can go to Facebook and watch the game, so I would encourage everyone to do that, even though they've had to postpone their actual game to '21, uh, they are going to be doing virtual. So nobody will be in the, in the stands, it will simply be the game, and they will broadcast it on Facebook Live. So encourage everyone to watch and cheer on Team Guns and Team Hoses on October 17th, and continue to donate because they raise money for, um, many worthy causes. And the last thing, if I can find, we have rescheduled the date for the Mayor's Habitat for Humanity Roof Challenge, where I'm going to sit on the roof until they raise enough money. And let me see, they've reset that date for Wednesday, October 7th, and I believe Lieutenant Williams is going to spend some time on the roof as well. So if you want to get us down off of the Habitat Roof at the Mayor's Build on, uh, around the Jackson Street build area, we would encourage everyone to come out on October 7th.
Can you keep them up?
Well, I might be able to arrange that. Depends how much you got, Carlos. We'll make that happen. No comment from Lieutenant Williams back there. Does council have any other announcements this evening? Okay, and we'll move on to Lincoln University Student Representative Update. Uh, Carlos can give us a little bit of news on that.
Uh, hopefully we should have some, uh, two names to present to, uh, the mayor, so we hopefully can seat of someone at the October meeting. So looking forward to a student coming and sitting and being a part of, of, of this council, uh, to offer valuable input from Lincoln University, and also, uh, valuable input from students, uh, on a, on a college level. So look forward to that, hopefully within the next couple of weeks.
Thank you, Councilman Graham. We enjoy having a student from Lincoln here on our council as our liaison. Item 10, Presentations from the Gallery on Specific Bills or Resolutions, and we have several people who have signed up. We may have some callers as well. So we will go down in order of who has signed up. We already know that the resolution will be not taken up this evening, but we do want to hear the testimony, and, um, all individuals are limited to five minutes. And I also have in effect the, the John Landwehr Rule, and the Landwehr Rule is that we don't clap and we don't boo. So I always try to follow that, that we'll just, um, try to just be respectful of everybody's opinion when they come to the podium. So with that, I will ask Mrs. Donaldson, she has the list, of who is first on the list.
Uh, Mr. Jay Barnes.
So welcome. We just asked you, uh, state your name for the record, and welcome, Mr. Barnes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
Make sure I'm following proper protocol. In the last hearing, they told me to take the mask off. I'll leave it on, everybody's leaving the masks on, so I'll leave it on.
You're fine, we appreciate it.
Just want to make sure I'm doing what I'm supposed to up at the microphone.
Yes, thank you.
So Jay Barnes, 715 Swifts Highway, and ironically and quite literally, fourscore and seven years ago is when the United Daughters of the Confederacy placed that marker, not in its current location, but up the road at the intersection of Greenberry, Morrow, and Huff Park Drive. I've shared a long document with the prior commissions, I submitted it, it's part of the council's record I saw. I'd ask each of you to actually look at that compiled from primary and respected secondary sources about the truth of the battle that never was. And I would submit to you that that marker is not anywhere close to historically accurate, and that is by design, because the purpose of the United Daughters of the Confederacy, their local chapter was, and I quote, "The object is to let the younger generation see and know that we have not forgotten the men who wore the gray, for the men who wore the gray were right, and right can never die." And I would submit to you, Madam Mayor, that this town was not a Confederate town. It was a Union town. It was a Union town filled with German, Catholic, and Lutheran immigrants who protected this city in that time. The UDC was an anti-black, anti-Catholic organization, and they had a clear message that they wanted to convey. The UDC's leadership said that every UDC clubhouse should have a memorial to the KKK. They said that the KKK was an absolute necessity, a star of hope, to preserve and uphold the white civilization of the South. And we had Klan activity in Jefferson City that was anti-black and anti-Catholic. We had cross burnings in 1928, just before this was placed, all down Lafayette Street, aimed at intimidating black voters. We had, I'm sure there was relations with UDC members, Klansmen riding with the sheriff to break up Catholic stills during the Depression. That's who the UDC was. And that is what the UDC put as a marker in our community to divide us, that divides us still today, that is the source for the myth that Sterling Price passed on Jefferson City because he cared about our community rather than the fact that Union commanders and the people of our town stuck together, and he knew he was going to get his butt kicked here, just like he had a couple weeks prior. Now, this goes how I think it's going to go, the opponents are going to get up and say, "Oh, the world's going to end, you want to erase history." No one is proposing that. Stop letting people make fake arguments. Our side wants to celebrate the history of our community. The question is not whether we celebrate history, it's how, and who gets to tell the story? Do the losers get to tell the story? Do the anti-black and anti-Catholic bigots get to tell the story, or do we get to tell the story? If an organization came to this council today that had clear ties to the Ku Klux Klan and offered the city a gift, would you accept it? Would anyone here accept it? Because that's the question for the council. That's the question for the city. And there's no question about his, history. Everyone wants to celebrate our history. So we're not saying erase history. We're saying let's tell history in a truthful way. Symbols matter. Truthful history matters. The results of the Civil War matter. I saw on Facebook, somebody in our community suggested that that was a marker of peace. The person who wrote that is completely ignorant about the history of our country and the history of the organization that placed this. Don't be confused about the issues. It has taken fourscore and seven years, and it's going to take a little bit longer, because the gears of democracy work slow by design, and that's, that's ordinarily a good thing. If the KKK offered that gift today, this council would say no. And I think this council should move together to remove that marker from that organization and replace it with a series of markers and monuments throughout this city that celebrate our true heritage, a heritage of German Catholic immigrants, a heritage that in 1862 we were a beacon of freed slaves who swam across the Missouri River to freedom here, not to a divisive, anti-historical rock placed by a bigoted organization. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Is there any questions? Thank you very much. Mrs. Donaldson?
Mr. Nimrod Chapel?
Welcome, Mr. Chapel.
I'm going to have to remember next time in my, uh, placement on the agenda to not follow the statesman, Jay Barnes. He laid it bare, didn't he? I'm Nimrod Chapel, President of the Missouri State Conference of the NAACP and the Jefferson City Branch. I think I've been in Jefferson City as a president five terms now, that's almost a decade, and served in the branch longer than that. I am deeply concerned, by the way, my address is 701 Primero's Court, Jefferson City, deeply concerned about this deferral in stewardship. We look to this august body for leadership during this time to ensure that all people in the entire Jefferson City area and Cole County, and indeed in the state, know that this is a welcoming place. Now, this isn't just some out-of-the-way hamlet, this is the state capitol. I've had the pleasure and dubious honor of representing hundreds, literally hundreds of protestors throughout the last several years in this city. The point is that they want to exercise their constitutional rights and observe that this is the place to do it. They need to come to Jefferson City and visit our state capitol and know, not only that they'll be safe in the process, thanks to JCPD and so many other good law enforcement folks, but also that they are welcomed. Now, I'll balance that with the story when I first got to town. My young wife Denise and I were looking for a house to buy, and we looked over in the same neighborhood as this little dirty monument exists. We decided not to move there because I won't live in a neighborhood with a Confederate monument. Lots of people don't want to live in communities with Confederate monuments. And the thing is, this isn't even really a monument. It is a marker erected to hate. There's no question about it. The deep ties between the Daughters of the Confederacy and the Ku Klux Klan have long been known. All you have to do is Google it, or you could read the 30-page paper the Representative Barnes wrote about it. There can't be many questions about that. So the only thing is, what are we going to do with this? I would suggest, as a Jefferson City person, a community leader, a taxpayer, a person who appreciates the constitutional obligations of this body and the way that you need to process it, that you do it quickly. Get rid of the marker. You can't give it away. You can't sell it. You have to destroy it. Get rid of it as quickly as possible. And then in the same breath, determine what you're going to replace it with, not on that spot, because that spot doesn't represent anything. It never has. Decide some historical facts about Jefferson City, like I, as an African American, would love to know where along the river, if there was a popular place, that slaves from Callaway County swam so that they wouldn't be killed, literally murdered. That would be pretty cool. Why don't you put out some history about the tight connection between German Catholic immigrants and the African-American community that they refused to boot out of town when that was brought up behind, at this same body, and then elected its first German mayor? Let's talk about some of that. But I don't think that we need to dilly-dally. I don't think that we need to wait. We can follow procedure, and that's fine, but I would ask that you do it as quickly as possible, because frankly, it makes me want to throw up, that my tax money is going to support any kind of a, any kind of a maintenance of a Confederate marker, especially of the sort that we have here. You're going to hear from folks who say, "Well, that was my family, and that was my blood." I'm not discounting the people who are here today. I'm simply saying that Confederate markers of the sort that we have here in Jefferson City have no place in our community, not if you truly want everybody to recognize that they're accepted and valued, not as a worker, not as a particular piece of the community, but just as a human being. And I'll close with this, because the NAACP since 1909 has worked to ensure that lynchings, the murder of African-Americans, black people, would stop. We studied it. We reviewed it. We passed legislation on a national level and worked to ensure that it doesn't happen at the state level as well. Can't we, as a community, come together and decide that equality and justice is for everybody? That everyone should be entitled to their own dignity? And that you shouldn't have symbols of oppression that are so deeply rooted in hate and bigotry, but still maintained by the city? Literally with the tax dollars of the people who were oppressed at the time that the marker was placed, who were oppressed during the Civil War, and in many cases are still oppressed today. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Thank you, Mr. Chapel.
Thank you.
Ms. Donaldson?
Mr. Bob Pretty?
Welcome, Mr. Pretty.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm Bob Pretty, I live at 1744 Englewood Drive. Fifty-two years, one month, and two days ago, when I was a young reporter in this town, covering the city council meetings for a radio station that's no longer based here, I sat at a city council meeting, and I watched as six courageous members of the council, led by Kenny Welthammer, voted to approve Jefferson City's Fair Housing Ordinance. I recently recovered part of a recording I made that night. And a couple of our leading citizens were testifying against the organ, against the ordinance. One called for a citywide vote. This was after the Junior Chamber of Commerce had taken a survey indicating Jefferson Cityans were two to one against a fair housing ordinance. The other one was the head of the local Realtors Group, who suggested that passing this ordinance would be bad for real estate values in Jefferson City, and you shouldn't do it. 1968. I was saddened because that recording reminded me of what our city was in 1968, and hearing it forced me to have feelings against this monument, which I thought then was kind of benign, but now I feel much different about it. The Chamber of Commerce Board, not the junior group, but the grown-up group at that time, had unanimously recommended passage of the Fair Housing Ordinance. The council, on August the 19th, 1968, voted six to four. For a local ordinance, and for the first time in our city's 140-plus years' history, everybody could live where they could afford to live in this town for the first time. Thirty-five years before that ordinance was adopted, an organization founded on the idea that the Civil War was a military victory for the North, but not a civil defeat for the South, put up the city's only Civil War monument that praised a Confederate general for deciding not to do something. And then, that man was Sterling Price. This group dedicated to maintaining that certain people should know their place in a society, put up that monument, and the city, which was much different in 1933 than it is today, accepted that monument. The twisting of history, which is preserved by that monument, which has no value today, as Jay's scholarship shows. It honors Sterling Price, a man who three times took an oath of loyalty to this country to protect it and its constitution from enemies, foreign and domestic. Once when he fought in the Mexican War, once when he was elected to Congress, and a third time when he was elected governor, he took that oath right here. And then in 1861, he decided that those three oaths were meaningless, and he pledged his loyalty to the Confederacy and became one of the enemies that he had three times sworn to defend this country against. This monument commemorates his decision to do nothing, a decision made by a man whose oaths of loyalty meant nothing to him. It's not a monument we should have. It does not mark any specific location for any specific action, it doesn't mark the place where he decided not to attack our city. In fact, the Confederate monument was moved from its original location- In fact, the Confederate monument was moved from its original location and now is inside what would have been the Union lines in 1864. We should have Civil War monuments and signs. We should have signs that cover all of our history. As far as erasing history by removing this, I am afraid to tell you, the Daughters of the Confederacy erased history when they put it up. The monument was put there by a group that felt those who didn't look like its members were inferior and should know their place. But in 1968, our city council, six of its members, in a six-to-four vote, had the courage to say, "Your place is anywhere you can afford to live in Jefferson City, and you're welcome to be here." That monument was outdated then, it's even more outdated now, and it says things about our town that it shouldn't be saying today, and our town should not accept it saying those things about us today. When the time comes, I hope that this council unanimously votes to remove it. Where to put it, I don't know. Jay and I have a little bit of a difference of opinion on that, but it shouldn't be where it is, because it carries a message that we should not be giving to people who live here and the people who visit us. Any questions, Mayor? I've got 32 seconds to answer them.
Any questions?
Otherwise, I'll see you at the committee meetings.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Pretty. Mrs. Donaldson?
Mr. Carl Landwehr.
And when you come to the podium, you're certainly welcome to give your address, but it's not required. Just name for the record, though, please. Welcome, Mr. Landwehr.
My name is Carl Landwehr. I live in Jefferson City. And Mayor Turgeon, I'd like to, very simple unrelated question, does the Landwehr Rule apply, the John Landwehr Rule, apply for family meetings of the Landwehr family?
I think we can make that happen.
Can make that happen? Well, let's see that it does. Mayor Turgeon, members of the council. I want to thank you for this opportunity to speak before you this evening. I also wish to acknowledge and share my respect for those who are of different points of view on this matter. Their public discussion has been with great decorum and respect. That's admirable, and I greatly appreciate that. I stand before you this evening to talk about this historical marker. My time is brief, your time is even shorter. For me, this is an educational marker. Allow me to tell you a brief story demonstrating why it is an educational marker. I'll tell you the story of a little boy 65 years ago, or thereabout, who happened to see this marker at its older location, original location, as he passed that area en route to visit relatives on Greenberry Road. This little boy wanted to know, "What is that?" It's kind of a strange thing for a rock to be near a big intersection. Years passed, and the curiosity became greater and greater. So this little boy began to want to know, "What was the Confederacy? Who was Sterling Price? And what's it doing there? What's with this big turn of events in which 12,000 Confederate soldiers opted not to destroy Jefferson City, but to move west and ultimately defeat it at Westport?" Further into the years, this little boy dug further into the marker. In so doing, he learned the terrible, terrible injustice of slavery, the brutality of slavery. History well records this. Why would brothers fight and kill brothers? Little boy sought more answers and spent a lifetime trying to discover those answers. Madam Mayor, you, members of the council, I am that little boy. It is me. Please do not remove this educational marker. There are possibilities, I do believe, that this marker could be preserved in places and areas to enhance its education. In fact, when you think about this evening, aren't we here today because of that marker? And didn't that marker serve its job to be an educational venue for these discussions to take place? Frankly, we do not have the responsibility to cherry-pick history. Furthermore, we do not have the responsibility to revise history. We shouldn't hide history in a warehouse where no one can see the educational dimensions. We have an obligation, however, to preserve history, the good, the bad, and the ugly. And yes, there's ugly. Mr. Barnes cited it well. For the sake of little boys like me and generations to come, let there be a marker that they can discover sometimes the ugly side of America. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Landwehr.
You're welcome.
Mrs. Donaldson?
Mr. Bob Scribner.
Welcome, Mr. Scribner. It's always nice to have a former councilman with us. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I was saying back there, I think this is the first time I've been back in the city council and spoke to, in front of a microphone at least, since I've been off the council. But anyway, thank you for the opportunity to let me address you tonight. I know there's a certain amount of risk in doing that, because, you know, I don't want to appear in opposition to the resolution is at risk being mislabeled a racist. And I know that's a real problem. I know there's a risk in alienating friends and acquaintances who are passionate in their belief. Mr. Barnes expressed that passion. But I also believe that to remain silent would be untrue to myself, so I think there's a duty to speak up. The marker in question seems to me to be such a straightforward notation of a moment in history. That's all it is, is just a point in time that I'm finding it hard to understand all the passion and emotion generated by the simple phrase on the marker. It says this, "Deciding against attack, the Confederate Army, under General Sterling Price, turned from Jefferson City, October the 7th, 1864." I don't see any notation or memorialization or any, there are no words of praise. I don't see the story that I'm hearing told here tonight on that marker. I don't know where it's to be found on there. It's a part of my history, actually. According to records, my great-great-great-granddad, William David Scribner, was a patriarch of one of the 31 families living in Jefferson City when the state capitol was built. We've been here a long time. His son, Benjamin Payne Scribner, was a sergeant in the cavalry of the Union Army. He was actually posted here in Jefferson City at the time that Price was making his decision to attack or bypass Jefferson City. According to the historical accounts I've read, the Union Army was not a large force. I think Mr. Barnes' paperwork says 5,000, and the Confederates were about 12,000. But they went around the city lighting campfires and walking around in the daytime and making themselves look like a larger force than what they actually had, and that's why Price decided to bypass Jefferson City, not because he had affection for the city, but because he was afraid that he was going to be defeated, or that he would lose more men than what the time was worth. So it reminds me of two things. It reminds me that Jefferson City was almost a battleground, and it turned out that they weren't, because he made the decision to leave the city. It also reminds me that I have family ties, that my family supported the Union Army and supported anti-slavery. A big part of my motivation to be here tonight is because I am in total opposition to the cancellation culture. And I feel like if the council votes to remove this stone, as simple as it is, it's not a big thing, the stone itself is meaningless in reality, but the precedent that's set for doing that is what I'm concerned about. Where does it end? Will you be pressured to change the name of Sterling Price Road? If we're going to remove a stone that has Sterling Price's name on it, are we going to change the name of the road? Are we going to change the name of the roads of Washington, Jefferson, Madison, Monroe, and Jackson Streets? What about Clark Avenue or Lewis and Clark Memorial, where the slave York is depicted? Is the name city of Jefferson in danger? Rather than cancel history, we should be doing our best to teach and inspire our youth to learn history. Philosopher George Santayana is credited with saying, "Those who do not learn history are doomed to repeat it." The Jewish people, rather than destroying Auschwitz and Buchenwald, have created museums and memorials to remind people of the horrors of the Holocaust, so they might never be repeated. I know emotion seems to rule the day at this time in our lives, but decisions based on emotion are often not good decisions. I ask you to consider your vote, make it based on fact, logic, and common sense, not on emotion. I want to thank you for your time and your service to the community. May God bless you and give you wisdom in your deliberations. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
Questions.
Thank you, Mr. Scribner.
Thank you.
Next up is Ms. Edith Vogel.
Welcome, Mrs. Vogel. And again, it's nice to have a former councilwoman here as well.
Madam Mayor, did you say we could unmag, if we want to speak?
We can. And I'll also mention as well that we do have handstand.
I don't want any of that stuff. Listen, I'm Edith Vogel, and I am the proud caretaker of Camp Lily here in Jefferson City, Missouri, that was the headquarters for the Union Army during the Civil War, in particular this time that is mentioned, when Sterling Price and his troops were around out on the east end of town. And I'm here, with all due respect, to offer my property, private property, as the caretaker of it, and offer it as a place, instead of it being thrown away, stored in storage, which will never be seen again, I want the marker to come to my home on 800 St. Mary's Boulevard, private property that I pay a lot of taxes on, and my brother-in-law cuts three acres of grass every week. And I do this with all due respect to everyone here. On whatever side you're on, it doesn't need to be thrown away. It needs to be put away where it's taken care of, and that's me. I want to be the caretaker. If you decide, after your meetings with your committees, administration, and public works, and then bring it back to the council for a vote, don't throw it in the trash and/or don't put it in storage. I'm willing to take the responsibility of the rock at my home. Okay? Thank you very much. Thank you.
Are there any questions? Thank you, Mrs. Vogel. And Mrs. Donaldson?
Ms. Jackie Coleman.
Welcome, Mrs. Coleman.
I live at 2050 Trenton Court, and it's my pleasure to speak to you all. And I like to turn around, because I know so many people in this room. And I'm speaking as an African American.
Mrs. Coleman, just in case, I know, I don't know, does that come out so that her comments can be heard?
Oh, you can't hear? Okay. I like to speak to the audience, because I've served this community since 1979, when I moved here with my husband, Ron Coleman, who was an icon in Jefferson City. The stories he tells me of the discrimination, because they were isolated in certain parts of the community, but he loves Jefferson City, as I have grown to love Jefferson City. We moved in town in '79 and had to get a lawyer to buy a house on Primrose, because we were black. We're fighting over a rock that is in disrepair. I don't care what's on it. It never meant anything to me. I love Fairmont. I love Laurel. There's a lot of history in that neighborhood and a lot of wonderful people. But as an African American, that rock represents something very negative to me. And I feel it should be removed. It should not be on city property. And if someone wants to put it in their backyard, fine. I found out recently, my grandfather, who's white, Andrew Jackson Maxwell. We didn't realize, we knew he was always white, 13 daughters by the same Andrew Jackson Maxwell, couldn't marry my mother, they had to leave Starksville, Mississippi, because they knew they could not inherit any land. To fight over a rock that is in disrepair, and there's a home for that rock. When I served on the school board for 15 years, I didn't see black or white. I saw student achievement, and I fought for that. I am appalled. I respect everyone that wants the rock to be there. It's city property. I think you all have an opportunity in Jefferson City, and to this day, I feel discriminated against. It's isolation. You're not embraced and brought in. And I know people in this room that embrace me or my husband, but only to a certain level. A rock that nobody knew it was there, but the few neighbors that lived there, let's take a survey of all the people that live there and see if they want the rock. Because to me, it means absolutely, it means Confederacy. It means discrimination. It means that you don't like black folks. The people who put it there, they'd rather us be dead. A rock is not something Jefferson City is about. It needs to be about inclusion of all people. And I did that on the school board. I sit and stand before you now. You have a great opportunity to make the right decision. And if you lose a few votes, and I emailed my councilman, if you lose a few votes, so be it. This is a bigger statement. No, we're not going to change the names of streets. We're not going to change, I don't care about a street name. We're talking about one monument, one rock, and an opportunity to do the right thing. I know discrimination. You may not know it. I know how it feels to have a parent who had to get out of Mississippi, who was mother, grandmother, 13 girls, but they can never be equal and have to pass for white just to get a job in Chicago or St. Louis. You're saying to me, when you don't get rid of the rock on public property, that you don't really care about us all. And it's not about the Daughters of the Confederacy. It's not about that. Jefferson City needs to step up in many, many ways and embrace all people. If I, a middle-class, upper-middle-class individual, should not feel this way, because I may be privileged to a certain extent, but I do, and we're fighting over a rock to be placed, it's got a home, put it in that home. Or if somebody loves it in that area, put it in their backyard. But it should not be on taxpayers' property. It just should not be there. So, four minutes, I thank you and all my friends here that I know personally. I hope the city council makes the right decision. It's about saying something and embracing African Americans, and the history's not going to be lost. So thank you so very much, and thank you for letting me speak. My husband's in the car. He said, "Get out here," so I can go home, so he's out in the car. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mrs. Coleman. Any questions? All right. Thank you. Mrs. Donaldson? Welcome, Mrs. Graves.
Thanks. I hadn't planned on speaking, and I've also already had COVID, so I'm going to take my mask off and be comfortable. Hadn't planned on speaking, but after hearing some things, I'm going to say a couple of things just from a different standpoint. One, having served for 12 years in the past as a Missouri mansion, governor's mansion, excuse me, docent, when these governors take an oath in office, anybody does, you all have taken it, I took it in the years I served on the school board, you take it for the years you're in that office. You don't take that oath of office till the end of time. So, to judge Price on that, to his death, things changed greatly when our country divided over the Civil War, I feel is very unfair to him. And then, and I'm just speaking to him. I'm not going to speak pro or con on the monument. But in my personal family history, Price has a place. My great-great-grandfather and Price fought together in the Mexican War. Apparently, we're good buddies through that. They split up. My great-great-grandfather fought for the Union. Of course, Price was Confederate. He was captured by the Confederates, put in a hogpen-type prison. And because he was huge, the guesses are he was at least 6'5". And in that era, in the 1860s, he had to stood out in a crowd. He'd stand out in a crowd today. Price realized who he was, called him by name, talked to him, and released him and his relatives they had captured, and let them go free. They were on their own, outside of that, you know, fence. But he let them go. So, General Price is not this horrible, awful creature that like Hollywood would create. He was a real human being, with all his pros and cons to him, his faults and his strengths. But I just, I hate to hear somebody be so maligned, this far out, 150 years ago, that we need to stop and think about who these people were and what somebody might say about us as individuals 150 years from now. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you, Mrs. Graves.
Mr. Richard Frank.
Welcome, Mr. Frank.
It's Father Frank. I'm a Catholic priest. 803 Airview Drive, in the Third Ward. I'm happy to give a little testimony, which I did twice at two meetings of the Historic Preservation Commission. At one meeting, they had decided to keep the monument where it's at, but add interpretation. And I noticed that nothing's been, so far, mentioned about any kind of additional interpretation. At the second meeting they had, I wish I gave a little testimony, they completely changed their vote. They're going to send a letter to the council. Well, it seems to me that hearing some of the speakers tonight, all of which are quite eloquent, a big sticking point is who donated the monument. I would wonder if the UDC, United Daughters of Confederacy, had not donated it, and that we knew some of their background, I wonder if there would even be a question about it. Because the monument in itself, in its statement, as someone has already mentioned, simply states a historical fact. I contend that it does not glorify General Sterling Price by simply mentioning his name and that he turned away from the city, nor does it uphold or glorify slavery in any way. It's a plaque. It's not a statue of some hated Confederate figure, that some of which have already been torn down in our country. So, I think that it's been a part of Jefferson City history, in spite of the fact that it was donated by a hateful organization at the time. But it's been a part of Jefferson City history. And as Carl Landwehr mentioned, it can be a very educational tool. And that's why I would be in favor of keeping it, but adding interpretive signs that gives the bigger picture of what was going on in and around Jefferson City at that time, and why Sterling Price turned away from the city. So, and you can almost get the idea that it's a, in spite of the fact that a Confederate organization donated it, it really is a testimony to a Union victory. Because the Union kept, the Union soldiers kept the Confederates from entering Jefferson City. Now, I do have a quote here that, if you permit me, I would like to read it from a very preeminent organization in our country called the American Battlefield Trust, 50,000 members, that has been very successful in preserving historical ground in our country. And this quote is from the president of that organization. "We see war monuments and memorials, especially those on America's battlefields, as important educational tools for teaching valuable lessons about our history. Rather than move or remove monuments, we have always encouraged communities to add additional interpretation to any monument to help citizens reflect on the many layers of their history, both good and bad, heroic and painful. We should also be wary of presentism." Presentism, new word for me, "which is the tendency to look at past events through a contemporary prism. When judged against modern values without the benefit of the past 150 years of history and hindsight, they did not have, no person or country is spotless. Previous generations erected those monuments for a variety of reasons, to express what they thought was important, even if we don't agree with it. While some were erected as political statements, others were erected as symbols of grief, as communities mourn and honor their fallen fathers, sons, husbands, and brothers. When one is destroyed, our ability to learn and improve from that history is greatly impaired. And as the writer and philosopher George Santayana said, "Those who do not learn history are doomed to repeat it." So, I'm in favor of keeping the monument there, but adding abundant interpretation at that spot in the form of other signs that would give a larger picture and the context, and explain what was going on. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? All right. Thank you very much.
Ms. Sandra Walls.
Jay Barnes is going to leave when I'm going to say something. My name is Sandra Janosky Walls, and I am a Catholic. But I am a member of the United Daughters of the Confederacy and the United Daughters of, my mind blank, Daughters of the American Revolution. My ancestors fought. I mean, I went out there the other day, my husband and I, to take a picture of that little rock. And you should see the big mansions along that road. They look like Gone with the Wind. So, I don't know what the problem is. I mean, if Mrs. Vogel is willing to take it, I think that would be a good thing. I'm also a member, the last member of the Winnie Davis chapter here in Jeff City. We no longer have a chapter here in Jeff City. So, I am active in a chapter in St. Louis. And of course, as you know, they've torn down a lot of statues in St. Louis. But as we continue to take down, this is just one step of tearing down monuments. We cannot re-erase history. It's history. So, people are just tearing them down, trying to erase it and put their own, what they want to have happened 150 years ago. I'm sorry, my whole family was on the South. My husband's was all on the North. So, we kind of kept it even. But that's what I wanted to say, as the United Daughter of the Confederacy. I didn't realize we were so hated until just recently. And I have been in 30 years and didn't know how much hate was against the Daughters. I don't remember doing anything to anybody, but that's the way it is. So, thank you for, thank you for listening to me.
Thank you. Any questions? Councilman Fitzwater?
Yeah, I just had, I'm sorry.
I meant your ward.
Oh, okay. Great. Thanks for being here. I just had some questions. I mean, I think Mr. Barnes raised some good issues, and, you know, I've done a lot of research over the last 96 hours. I mean, there's no doubt in the past, I can't, again, I can't change the past. But there's no doubt in the past, the United Daughters were supportive of a very vile organization. Let me ask my question. I tried to research online. Has the United Daughters renounced that, changed your stance, done anything to say, "We can't help what our ancestors in this organization did," but that's not the philosophy in 2020?
It's not, it's not been the philosophy as long as I've been a member. And I was a member here in Jeff City under Winnie Davis of Elizabeth Hawkins, as you know. And she, no, wouldn't tolerate it. My grandmother would have slapped any of her sons that would have joined the KKK. She would have slapped them down. You know, I can find out, but I have not heard, no. I mean, we just don't, we just don't associate with that. And I don't know where they all came up with that.
Well, it's clearly in the history. I mean, you can go back and read, and, you know, there's a lot on the internet. But, you know, I know organizations change, and I'm not trying to say what this organization's beliefs are today, but historically, its beliefs have been.
Well, I imagine historically, yes, back in the beginning. But, like I said, I've been in over 30 years and have had, heard nothing like this, what was, what's been printed about the Daughters.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
This one's hard to read. Mr. Hendricks?
Welcome, Mr. Hendricks.
Good evening to everyone, Madam Mayor, council members. Thank you so much for allowing me to be here with you tonight. I came tonight just to go on the record to say that I do support the removal of this Confederate monument. It is controversial, and in many ways, it is painful. In some ways, it is fearful. It is disruptive to our peace, as we can see. When I thought about this and what this symbol represented in that regard, I began to think about, what statement is this symbol, its removal or its presence, what statement is it making? Does it offer strength to our city? Does it offer offense to an important segment of our community? Does it stay in line with the direction of our intent as a community? As we are doing things even now, hiring a diversity and equity and inclusion director for our Parks and Rec, is it in line with the vision of our city? When I think about this kind of monument, when I look at my city, I want to see a landscape that celebrates diversity and not exclusion, that promotes this kind of inclusivity, that promotes having a space that is free from fear. I don't know about you, but all of my life, when I came to Jefferson City, I was on Capitol Street, and we've had flyers put on our cars that identified African Americans that were living and residing in that area. We heard about camps that were training grounds around the city. We heard about white trucks that were driving around and beating up young black students. Those were, that was my introduction to the area in 1993. After 27 years, I've seen these types of things show up. And so, because they send a message, and they have such a symbolic representation of a community that had hatred, that had division, that had power dynamics, that had systemic oppression as its motive, causes me to be a little bit nervous. When I see those flags, I think twice. When I see those symbols that represent, to some people, heritage, I think twice. When I thought about tonight, I wondered, what would I say to my son about this legacy? How would they digest this educational information without feeling still some kind of way? How would they embrace this as a part of their own identity when they claim to be from Jefferson City? And I realize that it will inflict a little bit of hurt to their own sense of self as well. Do they get to hooray and parade this part of their city? Do they get to go and stand shoulder to shoulder and celebrate what this city is to them as they grow up as young men in community? Or do they really feel a little tinge when they talk about their city and the idea of this identity being tied to them and its controversial space? I think we have a powerful moment tonight. I really do. I think the moment that we have here is a moment that says that we want intentional action about the message that we are shaping in the culture, that we have an intentional decision to make about what kind of environment we're creating for the 150 years down the road. I haven't seen many American Indian monuments. They're gone. I haven't seen many of those that have been prescribed. What I'm saying is that societies change, and the landscape reflects the ideals of the people that are there, while giving homage, as much as possible, to its history, but also intentionally deciding how that landscape is going to tell the story. And so, I invoke you, and I hope and challenge you to tell a story that really makes us all proud, that gives us a space to make love and unity our mantra, to be strong and still resilient to oppression, to be strong and still adamant about who we want to become and what type of people we want to invite and celebrate as a part of our heritage and a part of our legacy. Thank you, guys, so much for your time tonight.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you.
Ms. Doris Smitsler.
Welcome, Mrs. Smitsler.
I'm Doris Smitsler, and I do live in the county. Although, if I step across my backyard one foot, it's in the city. I'd like to thank you for letting me come and speak tonight. I have a little different story to tell you about that rock. The rock marker has a personal significance to me, my family, and members of my extended family as descendants of German immigrants, Erhard Couch and his brother-in-law, Frederick Karl Strobel. I am the great-great-granddaughter of Erhard Couch. These two men, who were just farmers, they were in a field at the intersection of Route C and Route D, and they were murdered. The St. Paul's Lutheran Church records state, and I quote, "fatally struck by a shot during the invasion of Price's army on October the 8th, 1864." This incident happened a day after that quote on the rock, deciding against attack, the Confederate army under General Sterling Price turned from Jefferson City on October 7th, 1884. I mean, 1864. This is a fact of history. But the lives of both of those families were changed forever. It was a brother and a sister who brought their families from Germany, came to America on November 11th, 1857. And they brought with them their families, and they came to Cole County, and they decided that that would be a beautiful place to live, found a place, they lived in the same house, both families, and they were farmers, and they were very hard workers. Killed by the Rebels was carved in both of their tombstones. If you go out to St. Paul's Lutheran Church Cemetery, you can see Grandpa Couch's tombstone, right through the middle of it, Killed by the Rebels. Mr. ... Mr. Couch has a new tombstone because after his wife died, they put up a marker with both of them. The Missouri State Times newspaper on October fifteenth, eighteen sixty-four describes the incident. If you look at that newspaper article, it's several pages long. It talks about Price's raid, but in particular, it says, and I quote, "And Frederick Karl Strobel and Erhard Couch, Germans who resided in the vicinity of Gordon and Eads Mill, and we know it as the Stringtown area, were killed for no apparent cause by persons among the main body of Price's Army." The historical marker reminds me, my family, and as well, there are many, many families that lived in this area that have a story similar to mine, each a little bit different. But if you go out and you look at the families who have been here for generations, there is a Civil War, Price's raid story that they can tell you. Some of them also include death, like mine. But it reminds us of the events of the day. It reminds us how two families' lives were changed forever. And I believe that that marker, and I am so happy that Edith has volunteered to move it to her house. And when she presented that at one of the previous meetings, I asked her, can we come and look at it? I don't care if the bronze marker is moved, is changed to be more accurate, but all I care about is that I have an opportunity to look at it, and it reminds me that there were families, hundreds and hundreds of families in this area, whose lives were changed because of the incident that happened on October the seventh or October the eighth. And I would love to see it moved to Camp Lily. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you.
Mr. Richard Allen?
Finally.
Welcome.
I fog up my glasses with a mask. I'm more than six feet away from anybody. I'm socially distancing. I have a photo of the plaque. The words did not speak, did not show up very well, so I highlighted them with a pen. All it says on this plaque that's on the rock is, as somebody else said, "Deciding against attack, the Confederate Army under General," and general is abbreviated, "Gen. Sterling Price turned from Jefferson City, October seventh, eighteen sixty-four." That's all it says. And I want to say, this rock is not a Confederate monument. It is simply a historical marker. There is no statue of Price, and it does not state the praises of Price or the Confederacy. Facts matter. The people behind the letter and a lot of people that want the removal, they're probably offended by the organization who dedicated the marker. And their bias causes them to read more into the inscription than what it states. I read simply what it states. It's just a fact. It's just factual. The marker, and I could go into the, the letter that was sent from the Human Relations Commission. It has inaccuracies in it. It reads more into what the inscription says. There's nothing in there about how Price was sparing the fair city out of benevolence or honor. It has, it says nothing about that. We read what it says. But some people want to read more into it than what's in there. I too am a student of history. On the hundred and fiftieth anniversary of the Civil War, which was between two thousand and ten and, and two thousand and fifteen, every day, I read something about what happened in Missouri on that date for five years. And when I got to the part about, in eighteen sixty-four, which would have been in two thousand and fourteen on that date in October, I read with interest what happened when Price's Army approached Jefferson City, and I want to tell that story. The marker is accurate, but it is not a complete history of the event. The skirmish, a skirmish did take place along the Morro River, southeast of Jefferson City at that time, and Price found that Union forces were ready for battle, and he knew it would be a long one. He wanted to get to the Kansas City area before winter weather, and he would run out of time if he tried to take Jefferson City. That is why he decided not to attack. And because of this, thousands of lives were spared in a war that had already taken so many, including some of my ancestors, who, by the way, were on the Union side. I think the battle that never was, it was a good thing and should be commemorated. People's lives were saved. Property was saved. I have a solution that I hope will be acceptable to all. It's a little different than what some have proposed tonight, but it's based on history. I propose that the marker be moved to the little park about one point five miles south on Greenberry, and that park is across from the historic Bolton House. This park is near the Morro River where the skirmish took place. It wasn't a battle, it was a skirmish. Some people were killed, but a lot was averted, and that's where it took place. That's where the historical part is. In my research, that's what I found. Signage could be added with a more complete history of the battle that never was. I think that's important because really, the plaque doesn't really say why. It just states a very simple fact. So that is my proposal. If you have any questions?
Any questions? Okay. Thank you very much.
All right.
Thank you.
Ms. Karen?
Lydens.
Lydens, thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you. I'll take this off, too. Thank you, everyone, for being here. Thank you, honored council and everyone else. And just a reminder, that things aren't always as they appear. Here's a little more about Sterling Price, as we've heard from some others. Who was Sterling Price and what did he contribute to Missouri? He was governor of Missouri from eighteen fifty-three to eighteen fifty-seven. In nineteen sixty-one, he was president of the Missouri State Convention, leading the vote that decided overwhelmingly against Missouri succession, along with the other southern Confederate states of America. He sought peace and signed an agreement with Federal Commander William Harney, pledging neutrality on both sides of Unionists and Confederates. Unfortunately, this agreement was dissolved by Unionists, and Price was forced to defend Jefferson City with troops against the Unionists, which led to the Civil War. But because of his leadership, Missouri didn't succeed from the nation. He was a Confederate general, but he didn't want to fight. And here's some examples that I want to bring up that some of you, some may know, some may not know. But the Bible is very clear about memorial markers and stones. Here's some examples of, from the Bible of the stones of remembrance. In Joshua four, one through nine, as Joshua led the Israelites into the promised land, God told him to place stones as a, as a memorial of crossing into the promised land, and what God had done to remind future generations of the miracles of God. I would say it was a miracle that this city was not burned down and hundreds and, or maybe thousands of people killed. That's a miracle. In First Samuel seven, Samuel set up an Ebenezer stone to commemorate, "The Lord helped us. The Lord fought the battle for them against their enemies, the Philistines, and brought them victory." This victory followed the dedication of the nation to return to God, committing them, committing themselves to serve Him only, and He delivered them from the hands of the enemies." Another commemorative stone. Proverbs twenty-three says, "Do not move an ancient boundary stone." I consider this as a boundary stone, not really against or for, although it was a miracle that they did not come in and burn our city down and kill a bunch of people. That's a miracle. A lot of us may not be here today if that hadn't happened. And I just want to say, I've been praying for this city and this government and this state for over fifteen years. I've lived in Jefferson City for fifty-one years. And there is a spirited division today coming against the Jefferson City area under the guise of racism. Let us not forget the battles of the Civil War, which divided the nation, and the victory through President Abraham Lincoln, Lincoln to emancipate the slaves. Racism is a powerful and deeply interwoven combination of pride and fear. And I'm going to say a little prayer. Father, today, we repent of pride, fear, and racism. We forgive the evils done on this land of Jefferson City and where we stand and where that rock stands and the whole region. We forgive the evils done on this land of division, hatred, and racism. That's really the problem. It's not the rock. We choose to walk in love and unity. Amen. Thank you for your time and your prayerful consideration to keep this boundary marker of history. That is really the issue. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you.
Ms. Jenny Smith? Mr. Brian Kahler?
Welcome.
My name is Brian Kahler, and I'm a Baptist minister who grew up in Jefferson City and returned to once again call the city home. And I want to thank you for considering this important issue. Others have addressed the historical inaccuracies with our monument to a Confederate traitor and enslaver, so I will do something different. Because monuments are not about history, but honor. That is why you will not find memorials to Adolf Hitler across Germany, but we all still learn about his evils. Likewise, we do not need a monument honoring a traitor and enslaver to learn about the evils of the Confederacy or its lost cause of enslaving black people. So removing this marker will not be rewriting or erasing history. It will be removing an honor to a traitor and enslaver. But if we are concerned about erasing history, let us turn to those too often forgotten. You see, we have honored this traitor and enslaver long enough. For nearly ninety years, we have had a monument to him, and unfortunately, it will stay there for at least a bit longer. But what about those erased by our history? Do you know how many people he enslaved? Do you know their names? Do you know where they are buried? Do you know of any monuments honoring them? That is what it means to erase history. To pretend this traitor and enslaver is worthy of honor adds to our history of forgetting those he enslaved. We should say their names. Unfortunately, they are mostly erased, lost to history like millions of other black men, women, and children held in bondage in this nation. Too often, their names are forgotten, their graves unmarked or overgrown, their lives ignored. But their lives mattered. So I checked the U.S. Census data for a glimpse into how many people were held in bondage by the traitor and enslaver we honor. In eighteen forty, seventeen persons. In eighteen fifty, nineteen persons. In eighteen sixty, twelve persons. There are imprecise ages listed along with sex, but no names. And even if we match up the ages from those different senses and assume that those are the same people, though they may not be, that gives us a total of at least twenty-nine persons enslaved by the traitor and enslaver we honor. The number is likely higher, as the Census data is only an imprecise snapshot every ten years, but it's at least twenty-nine. And while I do not know most of their names, and many are likely lost forever to history, I was able to find the names of two people enslaved by the traitor and enslaver we honor, a man named Henry and a man named Adam, who after the war was known as Adam Tucker. Adam was even forced to serve the traitor and enslaver we honor during the war. That means he was probably here on the outskirts of our city. Perhaps he was even standing there when the decision was made to retreat. But we do not honor him on our dumb rock. So it is time for us to remember those that we have too often erased from the story, and I will use the remainder of my time to honor them. Since I cannot call out their names, I will instead knock twenty-nine times, one time for each of those held in bondage by the traitor and enslaver we honor. And as I do, please reflect on the fact that each knock represents a life. Each knock represents a person who had their labor and dignity stolen by this traitor and enslaver we honor. Each knock represents someone trapped in an evil institution that left them vulnerable to rape, torture, and murder. And each knock represents a reason why you should remove this dishonorable monument. So take it down. Take it down for them. Take it down for us.
Any questions? Thank you.
Mr. Dick Dalton?
Thank you. My name is Dick Dalton. I'm a resident here in Jeff City. Taught at Lincoln University for thirty years, retired in two thousand and fifteen. There's a lot of learning, it seems to be going on about this monument. I was quite taken with what the young lady said about being part of the UDC and, and that she didn't know the history of the UDC. And I'm, I'm sure you'll be fascinated when you read about the books that they published and how they worked with textbooks and things like that. So that's one side benefit of having this conversation. I want to go back, though, a little bit to an educational moment that some of us in this room saw on television in nineteen sixty-five. We might have seen John Lewis coming across a, a bridge and being violently turned back by the local authorities. It seemed like a lot of people in our country saw that, and it was an educational moment, so much so that twenty-five thousand of us showed up two weeks later to finish the march to Montgomery. There was something we didn't know, a lot of black people knew what was going on, but a lot of us white people didn't know what was going on. You know, that hasn't changed much since then. We have our videos and our TV and our phones and all, we see, and, and we see again and again and again, a repeat and a repeat and a repeat. And, and I think, I, I think there's a lot of dense material here. I don't think we're really getting it yet sometimes. I know that... Or are you saying you don’t want it removed and somebody’s going to remove it?” Because it wasn’t clear, right? And a lot of people stopped, and we had conversations. And yes, it was an educational moment, and I wrote some letters to the editor you might have read. I thought the best one was the one about the Trojan horse. I was, I was standing at the monument one day when this idea came. Oh, my goodness, it’s a Trojan horse! The defeated enemy decides to give the victors a little present. Well, what happened? Yes, the United Daughters of the Confederacy provided the cost and all for having a monument put in our city. You know, another thing that we learned? Our city must have been pretty remiss to not have their own markers already put up around town about the Civil War. Now, if the citizens really wanted to celebrate the Civil War and show the Union victory and all these things, lots of opportunity. And even today, we have the opportunity to maybe correct that error that we haven’t really made much of it. So I’m in favor of removing the monument. And by the way, if the city owns it, then the city can do what it wants to regardless of what a state lawyer might have to say, right? It would just be the city’s property, and if you want to take the plaque and put it over here and the stone over there and the concrete base over here, belongs to you, right? So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any questions? All right, thank you.
Could I ask a question about, do we need to come to each of those commission meetings to do the same thing again?
You’re certainly welcome to either come or view, but since the comments already have been put on record and all ten council members are able to listen, I would say that you would not feel the need to have to come and repeat them because all the council members already have the testimony.
But those, those particular groups will actually make a decision recommendation, right?
And I guess I should clarify that those two committees are made up of five council members, so basically you are looking at the committee.
Oh, thank you.
So five council members, one from each ward are on administration and five are on public work. So really, it is basically the five council members and the other five. So I would always say that the meetings are open and public and anyone is welcome to come, but you would also basically be repeating to the same, the same council members.
Great for clarification.
And I’m glad you mentioned that because I had that assumption and realized now that not everybody would know that, so thank you for asking the question.
Thank you.
Ms. Patsy Johnson?
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Patsy Johnson. I live at 908 Lafayette Street. I’m a lifelong resident of Jefferson City. I’m here this evening to share my experience of growing up in the sixties, well, being a child in the sixties, and my experience with that Confederate monument. And also to ask for, to render an appeal to this council body. And so, growing up in the sixties, I walked to school, and I had to pass that monument, the Confederate monument. Originally, I always had an eerie feeling about that monument. Didn’t understand why, didn’t know what it was, but I would just walk, and it, it just, something about it didn’t feel good. And it was more than just me that walked. And I became curious enough, I couldn’t understand what it was, and so I looked at it and decided to read it. And as I read that monument, you know, and I saw that it was the United Daughters of the Confederate, and what that monument said to me, that it’s a monument, a Confederate, KKK. It was in public, you know, it was important. You know, it, it told me that that, that neighborhood, this community that I lived in, that was my city, embraced that, that mindset, or embraced the KKK, the Confederate. It was hurtful. It was hurtful as a young girl to have to experience that. It was something that I held in. I didn’t talk much. I didn’t share with my parents. I felt like they had enough to deal with. But not only was it just reading it and understanding what the Confederate, the KKK was about, that they murdered people, they terrorized people, they enslaved people, and that’s what they were about. That was their belief. Not only was it that, it was also the neighborhood area that wasn’t so welcoming, experiences that I experienced growing up in Jefferson City. So it kind of came together. And when it came together like that, like I said, it was, it was a horrible experience. Not only an experience that I experienced, I know that there are other young people like me that experienced the same thing. They probably didn’t say anything, you know, some of my siblings, we discussed it some, and we let it go because it was hurtful. It’s something that we didn’t just carry on and discuss all the time. That experience is an experience that I experienced and so many other people around the country experienced. So I’m here today to say that I, you know, I’m on the Human Relation Commission. I, I work hard in different areas to try to, for human rights, and to try to provide a welcoming community. I don’t believe that’s what we want to reflect. That monument is important when it sits on public property and is out in public. That’s something that we should not want to embrace. And I ask you all, each one of you commissioners, when you get the opportunity to voice your opinion and cast your vote, vote for a welcoming community, because that is not welcoming. It, it, it brings fear, terror. It, it says we embrace slavery and everything else. It, it doesn’t, it doesn’t embrace a welcoming community.
My name is Darryl Maples. I live at 2416 Ivan Road here in Jeff City. Lived here my entire adult life. I am what I would think to be a patriot. My father spent more than twenty years in the United States Air Force. My brother spent time in the U.S. Navy. But I stand in opposition to the removal of this marker. And with regard to traitors and haters and slavers, if they’re going to be considered traitors, I have to say what’s on my mind, and you’re going to have to consider that man that our city is named after, a traitor too. They seceded from the country of Great Britain, yet we celebrate every July 4th. So you can’t have it both ways. You got it one way or the other. Now, with regard to the monument or the marker, what I have heard tonight is mostly, if I counted right, more in favor of keeping the monument. But I’m also in favor of not only keeping it, but a compromise. And I’ve heard a couple of very good chances for compromise. I want to tell you a Jeff City story. Prior to the war, there was a man named James Levi Cowan. He was good buddies with a man named Frederick Burley. Burley was a German immigrant, Cowan was, I think, Scots-Irish, and they both were buddies. The war broke out, and they went their separate ways. Cowan, from Jeff City, went to the South. Burley went to the North. And as fate would have it, they met each other at Wilson’s Creek Battlefield in a hot August day in 1861. Burley was struck, of all places, the buttocks, was struck severely and nearly mortal. Unbelievably, and this is a true story, ladies and gentlemen, his friend James Cowan saw him across the battlefield, made his way across the lines through the smoke, the blood, and the death, and tended to his old friend. He saved his life. Burley survived the war. As fate would have it, so did Cowan. Many years later, they returned to Jefferson City. They got here and they, as old men, reacquainted themselves. And as old men do, they were seen sitting many times at the county courthouse lawn, swapping war stories, probably telling lies and watching pretty girls go by. It’s kind of what those old guys do. I turned sixty this year, so I can say I joined that crowd. But they loved each other. They saw, they saw the world differently. They saw that there was a difference in how they viewed the world, and right, wrong, errand, different, good, bad, and ugly. They still cared about each other. So much so, that they solidified and concreted their relationship till the day they died. Mr. Burley is buried in Old City Cemetery. Jim Cowan, or James Cowan is buried at Riverview. I’ve marked both of those graves personally with markers that came from the U.S. government, because the U.S. government sees both sides as U.S. soldiers passed in the year of 1957, maybe 58. My point is this: compromise is attainable. That’s what government does, and that’s what we people do. You got a chance. Every one of you have a chance to compromise. And I will tell you that regardless of the emotions that are here tonight, and I will tell you that I personally take credit, if you will, for having some bad emotions recently. Ms. Laura, I owe you an apology. You’re my friend, and you always will be. Because these things are serious. Don’t erase history. I don’t care what anybody says. You throw that in the bottom of the river, you’re erasing history. Don’t do that. We learn from history. We learn from our mistakes. And if I come to you tonight, the descendant of both a Union and a Confederate great-great-grandfather on both sides, you people could compromise. I have trust in you. I believe in you. I believe in this city. It’s why I live here. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you.
Mr. Joshua Doon?
Welcome.
It’s Joshua Dunn, but it’s okay. First of all, I want to say how honored and humbled I am to come and speak in front of people that I consider friends, people that I’ve just met, former state lawmakers and community leaders such as Rod Chapel and Patsy Johnson and Richard Dalton. There is a misconception about this marker. We keep talking about it erasing history, but it’s not. The history on that marker is wrong. If we want to honor someone, honor the brilliant Union tactician who fired, who, who set those fires to make him think his forces were stronger. If we want to honor someone, honor the free slaves, the German immigrants, who kept this city safe. And you cannot say that it’s an honor to that. You’re, it is not a glorification, because you’re name-dropping a Confederate general. And the argument that it’s sort of like the Holocaust museum only works if we put plaques on there honoring Hitler, Eichmann, and Mengele for not killing all the Jewish I’m thirty-four years old. I have not experienced half of what you have experienced. And as a white male, I can’t even begin to understand what it’s like to cross a monument glorifying someone who wanted to keep my people that look like me in bondage. And it’s amazing to me that he, that Sterling Price freed your grandfather. That’s a great story, but he fought to keep other people in chains. This is not a historical thing. This is a racist marker glorifying and changing, glorifying a Confederate general and changing, attempting to change the history and lessen the blow of why we fought the Civil War. We fought the Civil War because half of the nation wanted to keep people in bondage because of the color of their skin and nothing else. It is past time. It is past time that we stop pretending that the Civil War was not fought by racists and bigots. It is past time that we stop calling them great men and praising their gentleman-ness. It is past time that we stop doing double standards and what about propagandism about Thomas Jeffersons and George Washingtons. It is past time that we remove racist markers out of our city and let everyone know that it comes to Jeff City that we value human life over the color of skin of certain individuals. I’m sorry if your family fought on the Confederacy and you want to remember them. That’s, I respect your wish to do that. However, to continue to have a marker in our city that tells a large group of our population that their history is less important than anecdotal stories about two people on either side who became friends is disgusting. And it’s time that we, as a city, as you as a city council, stop these disgusting tactics. Stop glorifying people that traded, that betrayed our nation and seceded from our nation. And stop honoring the people who fought to keep our nation together, fought to get people out of chains. This is an emotional topic, and I am so upset that you continue to push this down the road into committee after committee after committee. Mayor Turgeon said that all five, the two committees, the five of you stand, sit on those committees. Why must you discuss this further? Why can you not discuss it now? And it’s because you don’t want to make those tough decisions. You don’t want to alienate people in your voting, in your ward. But it’s time you take a stand and say that racism is no place in our fair city. And it’s time that we stop fighting amongst ourselves and trying to revise history and talk about cancel culture, and stop realizing that we have to stop glorifying traitors and slavers and racists and bigots and honoring the people that, the slaves in Callaway. That’s a monument of history that fought rivers and flowed down currents to come to get safe. That’s people we should honor, not people who are afraid to get their butts kicked by freed slaves, Union soldiers, and German immigrants. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you.
Ms. Mary Shantz?
Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Mary Shantz, and I’m the chair of the Historic Preservation Commission, and I live here in Jefferson City. The Historic Preservation Commission considered the issue of removal of the monument at two meetings: at the regular meeting in July and at a special meeting held in August. Between the July and August meetings, information became available to us that was of such importance that the commission decided to hold a special meeting to hear from citizens presenting this new information. At the August meeting, the commission voted unanimously to have the monument removed, reversing the decision we had made in July. The testimony given at the July meeting was not all inaccurate, but it only told part of the story. Additionally, the marker itself incorrectly gives the impression
by freed slaves, Union soldiers, and German immigrants. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Mary Shantz, and I'm the Chair of the Historic Preservation Commission, and I live here in Jefferson City. The Historic Preservation Commission considered the issue of removal of the monument at two meetings, at the regular meeting in July and at a special meeting held in August. Between the July and August meetings, information became available to us that was of such importance that the commission decided to hold a special meeting to hear from citizens presenting this new information. At the August meeting, the commission voted unanimously to have the monument removed, reversing the decision we had made in July. The testimony given at the July meeting was not all inaccurate, but it only told part of the story. Additionally, the marker itself incorrectly gives the impression that the citizens of Jefferson City support the partial truth and incorrect story the marker portrays. The UDC and their true intent was not fully outlined at the first meeting. The information provided to us after the July meeting and presented at the regular, excuse me, at the meeting in August, gave a fuller understanding of the UDC's motives to keep the lost cause alive and to glorify the Southern cause and the brave men who fought for the South. This was part of the UDC's strategy to educate the youths of our country about the glory of the Southern cause. The commissioners worked hard. They read and digested much information. The Historic Preservation is tasked with many responsibilities and goals, among which are to foster pride in the beauty and noble accomplishments of the past, to promote the use of historical landmarks and historic districts for education, enjoyment, and welfare of the city, to determine whether a building, structure, site, object, or district has historic culture, aesthetic, or architectural significance. Upon reflection about this monument and in consideration of the information and research presented to our, to us, and our responsibility to the city, we made our decision. However, we do agree that history cannot be erased. Jefferson City has a proud history and role in the Civil War, and that history should be a part of our community. We recommended that the monument be replaced with something that tells the whole story, something that tells a story that everyone in Jefferson City can be proud of. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? And I also appreciate the work of the Historic Preservation Commission. I know that you have, like you said, you've heard this at two meetings, and every commissioner has worked hard on this information, and we do appreciate the volunteers on our commission and for considering this. So I want to thank you for that as well.
Thank you. I appreciate those comments, and I know every one of the commissioners well it was very, as all of you probably know, it was, it was very difficult and took a lot of time and research and effort on our part. So thank you for the recognition.
We appreciate it. Thank you.
I have a question.
Typically, we typically don't have questions in between, so what we may do is afterwards, if you wanted to reflect your question, okay, to the city staff, and we will get that.
I tried to get it before she got away.
For the Historic Preservation Commission? Okay. You're welcome to go back there and ask her if you'd like, or however you want to handle that. All right. Mrs. Donaldson?
There's no more names signed up on the list.
Okay. Do we have anyone on the line that is on the phone this evening to speak to this item?
Is there anyone on the phone that would like to speak on the item?
No? Okay. So typically, we would have taken up this resolution at this time.
Hello?
Oh, is there someone on there?
Is there someone here who'd like to speak? Don't think so.
Okay. And I did want to mention, because we had the Chair of the Historic Preservation Commission, we also have with us the Chair of the Human Relations Commission, Mr. Woodrum, so both of those commissions did significant amount of work, and they both heard this at several meetings, so I do want to recognize that as well. And typically, we would take up this resolution, so after council has made the decision not to, I did also want to, though, give council an opportunity, or staff, if there's any comments that, that would need to be made at this time. Any comments or deliberation? Okay. And like we mentioned, the council decided to bring it up to the two committees, and I did just want to mention if, for clarification, to the Administration Committee, for the council members who are on Administration, would you raise your hand, just so we know who is with each one? And then Councilwoman Wiseman is the Chair, right, of Administration? And then for Public Works, our Chair is Councilman Hussey. And who are the members of that commission? So just that way, everybody is aware of who's on which one. Those two committees are made up only of the five council members, so they will be making recommendations to the full council. So what happens at those committee meetings is not a final decision. What they would make is a recommendation, I believe, to bring to council. So just for clarification of the process. All right.
Am I the only person that's not on one of those committees?
You have to be on, you're on one of them.
No, I'm not.
I guess you're not, because you're on two other committees.
Yeah.
So we have four standing committees, so Carlos is on the two other committees, so.
I'm not, I'm not on either one of these two.
So that's true. So I misspoke. I was, I assumed that you were on one of those, so. With that, we will take a five-minute break as council chambers, or do, does anyone not need a break? Keep moving? Okay. All right. We'll keep moving. If any council members need a break, they're welcome to, to take one. So we will, we will move on with the agenda, and we will go on to Consent Agenda, Item 11. I know as everybody's exiting, it'll be a little bit noisy, but we will, they might be thinking I'm taking, that we're taking a break, possibly. Two minutes? I wouldn't mind having a, I'm going to, okay. Okay. All right. We are reconvening. And, all right. Welcome back. So we would ask that if anybody wants to stay for the rest of our meeting, they're welcome to. Otherwise, we're going to continue. And I did want to say, and honestly, I forgot to at the end of that session, that we have had very interesting and educational discussion. I appreciate everybody coming here and the fact that we can all come together and talk. I know that words that were brought up, such as that it was a powerful moment that challenges us, and I think that it shows how nice it is that everybody can come here together with such differing opinions and still have an opportunity to talk this through, so we appreciate all of that public input. I planned to mention that before and, and forgot. So with that, we are on number, pardon me?
Can I, before we leave this topic, I don't have a strong statement. I'm just curious that the motion was to send it to both committees, and I know not everybody serves in that sort of way. And I don't know, I don't want to go against the wishes of the motion, but I feel like the, the desire of the motion was to create more of a process for deliberation and discussion and not quickly move through. I do wonder if, instead of a committee hearing, if a council work session on the topic could be an appropriate path forward in the sense that that would be inclusive of all 10 members. Sometimes council work sessions are done for council deliberation and kind of open conversation with staff reports, not to exclude public comment at that point in time. But I don't know, like, for those that, Councilman Fitzwater made the motion, and those that voted in favor, like, is the desire for a traditional committee process, or is it for the council to take time a little further to discuss and collectively come up with ideas, or at least how to move forward? So I'm just trying to think of, right now, we're slated to have back-to-back committee hearings on this topic with two committees that may not know what the charge is and how to move forward, and those dates are coming up fairly quickly. Councilman Fitzwater would want to respond, or if he had a, would be amenable to that or not?
Yeah. I mean, my comments were based on what had been said at other events. I mean, I tried to go back and, you know, again, in the rush, trying to find out what the appropriate process is. My main point was to enable council to have an opportunity to discuss this outside of an energized environment like tonight. Now, people, if everybody comes that were here tonight, that's fine. I mean, that, I mean, it's, it's an open meeting. The recommendations were, were those two committees, my recommendation, based on the comments, but if our city attorney can help us untangle that to create a process that enables everybody to participate, I, I'm not opposed to that. My goal was to get council, for us to be able to comment as these comments are coming outside of tonight, because, I mean, that's a pretty short timeframe for a very tough issue like this, so. I mean, I would defer to our city attorney. I don't know how we'd do that motion-wise. I would add, I'm only one of the, I don't know, six or seven, so, I mean, that's my feeling, to any of the other people that were in support, I guess, would have to.
And I appreciate that. I mean, when we started to figure out who's on these committees, you realize council, Councilmember Graham doesn't serve on either, and sometimes committee agendas are often full with other, I mean, I think of Public Works meetings, a lot of times, we can have a two-and-a-half to three-hour meeting without anything controversial, just by nature of the body of work and the content that we're working with. And so I just wondered if a work session, which we haven't really done as much as a council in the last few years as we used to, but when I first got on the council every, we'd have one a month, on a Monday evening for about an hour, hour and a half, and it was a less restrictive, open dialogue about a particular topic that we wanted to dive deep on. You know, we didn't take action at those meetings. We simply discussed and debated and, you know, you know, heard from staff about topics, asked questions, sometimes the kind of dialogue that can't happen in the context of a traditional council meeting, because you've got an agenda and things to work through. So I'll leave it at that. I don't, agendas can be put together and, and we can find a path forward, but I didn't know if that would match the spirit of the desire of the motion.
Well, and I know the other challenge, though, is after we just announced and kind of, although I made it very clear it was tentative, but I also wouldn't want any misunderstanding or miscommunication, but I don't know if that matters, but we.
I have a feeling the folks in the room tonight are going to be plugged in and figure out when the next meeting is, if it's posted on the website, if it's shared on social media, in the news media. This is, has attention drawn to it now.
Madam Mayor.
Councilman Hensley?
Thank you. I'll just say, I, until Councilmember Fitzwater recited those four procedural assurances that were apparently made, or at least hinted at during these other meetings, I had never heard of any one of them. And, you know, learning that those assurances were made to people over the course of several months throughout a number of meetings, you know, I thought the most prudent thing, most, really the most honest thing to do was to abide by those assurances, whether or not they were required or not. And I think that at the, at the root of it, what people were led to expect, anyway, was some sort of intermediate council step. It was called potentially a committee meeting, potentially not. I think they're, at the very least, expecting a, an intermediate step where it's considered, maybe additional public comment is expected. That's just sort of how I interpreted all those different assurances together. I don't personally have a preference over two back-to-back committee meetings or, or a, a work session of the whole council before we consider it again in one of these meetings. But I just thought I'd share my, my take on some of what we learned tonight, and then the steps potentially going forward. Thank you.
Councilman, vote.
I just wanted to explain my vote, too, and I agree with John, and that's pretty much why I voted the way I did. I didn't want to deny anybody the process, or let anybody think that we were pushing something through. It may or may not change my mind on how I was going to vote tonight, anyway. But I hated to say no to a process of going through a committee if that's what was alluded to at the commissions. So just wanted to make that clear.
Any other questions, comments, councilmen?
I'd say I'm the same way. I was not aware of the, I don't know, promises, or I don't know if they're promises, but, you know, just kind of the assurance that there was going to be a committee to hear this, until he brought it up. So I was, I just felt like it was fair to, to have that in place before we moved on, whether that's the admin, whether that's Public Works, whether that's a, you know, work session. I think the people that were here understand that there's going to be another step process before it finally comes to us, before we make a final decision, and so I just wanted to honor that, so.
Councilman Graham?
Yeah. Want to echo the same words. Even though I knew when we said the two committees, I was not a part of either one of those two committees, but certainly wanted to see the, the process in which, a couple of weeks ago, Councilman Fitzwater and I had a conversation about this, and about this going to a committee, and people thought it was going to go to one of the standing committees. So that was the mind frame I was thinking as well, too. So I just hope and pray that when it does go to one committee, or I hope it doesn't go, have to go to both committees, but it comes out of that committee to the full council for a vote. I just pray and hope that it does not stall in one of the committees, which I'm sure won't, but I'm just hoping and praying that it comes back to this, this body and we, and we take a full vote. And like someone said earlier, we're just, you know, kicking the can down the road, whether it be to remove it or whether it be to, to keep it. But whichever way it goes, I hope that the, the different, two committees understand that I would like for it to see it come back to this full body, even though not on one of the, the standing two committees. I do want to see it come before this full body for a vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further, yes, Councilman Lester?
It just would seem to me it would make more sense for us to do it as a work session. Everybody should be involved. You split it up between the two. I just, you know, if there's a way to do it all together, I think that would be better and would make sure it comes back to us for a vote, with all us having been a part of all the discussion. If there's a way to do that.
Any other questions, comments? So far, we're having, what we put out there with the resol, or with the motion earlier was the two standing committees, so that's, and this is all good discussion. I would have, I'd like to have it when we, before we took the break, and I, but, but I understand that it's coming up now, but what, what would you all like to do? Councilman Fitzwater?
I think, based on all the comments around the table, maybe if we just proceed as the motion indicates. But I know meetings that I go to, Chairman Hensley, even though I'm not on the Finance Committee, gives me the ability to say something. I can't vote. And, you know, when I go to, to Councilman Graham's Public Safety, have the ability, and he always asks if, if other council members, so even though some of us may not vote on other committees, we can certainly attend either Administration or Public Works, and maybe for the honor of what we committed to the public, we just hold firm with the understanding that any council member that wants to attend those meetings, and last thing I want to do is add to people's calendar, because I know they get tied up, that, that at least enables us to do what we voted to do, and, you know, I assume, you know, I feel very comfortable the Chair of Public Works would recognize other council members, and Chair of Administration, Councilwoman Wiseman, I'm sure would do the same in Administration if a council member wanted to make a comment. So, yeah, I guess that would be my recommendation, taking into account all we've talked about.
Councilman Hensley?
Again, I'll just ask a question, I guess, on a point of order, and hopefully, we can just have a consensus here. The fact that this was referred to two different committees, I wouldn't expect that that would require that both committees would necessarily have to vote it out to the full council. If one of the two committees voted to pass it on to the full council for consideration, it would still be passed on by one of the committees for full council consideration. I'm not necessarily expecting that either, either of those committees would, would see it stall or see it fail. But I would just hope that the expectation is not necessarily that we would see this, that we would have to see this voted out of both committees, but that one or, one or, either one or both would be fine.
I agree.
Okay. It seems, seems we have a consensus on that. Thank you.
So with that, any further comments? And I have to say, it's all good discussion and good brainstorming and good, I think it's good to look at all the options and figure out what really is the best, and so, anything further? All right. Item 11, Consent Agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, motion passes. Item 12, we have no bills introduced. Look at that. What? So we'll have a quick meeting. All right. Item 13. Sorry. Bill's pending, 2020-24.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with GWH Landscape Contracting LLC in the amount of $54,548.67 for the fire station number five, pavement replacement project phase one.
Chief Schofield?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, this would allow for replacement of the concrete pavement coming from Fairgrounds Road all the way up to the bay doors at Fire Station Five to include the approach from the roadway and a short section of the Greenway Trail. This concrete has been deteriorating over the years, we've tried to patch it multiple times, and it's time to replace it. This would be phase one of a two-part program that we would seek to additionally work on next year or subsequent years, and the funding for this project would come out of Fire Department Building and Grounds line item. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions or council discussion? Roll call, please.
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Vote?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
She said aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Bill passes, 2020-26.
An ordinance amending Section 3-3 alcohol, drug, and controlled substance abuse policy, subsection M, employee assistance, subsection U, testing locations, and subsection V, who is a contact of the City of Jefferson Personnel Policy Manual.
Mrs. Strope?
Thank you. So, we recently changed providers for both our EAP program and for our drug and alcohol testing, and both of those locations are listed in our Personnel Policy Manual, and so this just cleans up the language in the Personnel Policy Manual to list the correct I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Any questions, deliberation? Roll call, please.
Kimna?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Vote?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Bill passes, 2020-27.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri amending Chapter 19 Motor Vehicles and Traffic Schedule J, parking prohibited by the addition of 30 feet on Alpine Court.
Mr. Marash?
Thank you. As the clerk indicated, addition of a little-known parking zone on Alpine Court, it's a little cul-de-sac with about half a dozen apartment buildings on it or so, each has their own parking lot. When somebody parks in this section of the street, it does create a little bit of a sight distance issue. Transportation Traffic reviewed it and recommended to the council.
Thank you. Any questions, deliberation? Roll call, please.
Lester?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Vote?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Vote?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Vote?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Bill passes, 2020-32.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri amending Chapter 19 Motor Vehicles and Traffic Schedule J, parking prohibited by the addition of 30 feet on Alpine Court.
Mr. Marash?
Thank you. As the clerk indicated, addition of a little-known parking zone on Alpine Court, it's a little cul-de-sac with about half a dozen apartment buildings on it or so, each has their own parking lot. When somebody parks in this section of the street, it does create a little bit of a sight distance issue. Transportation Traffic reviewed it and recommended to the council.
Thank you. Any questions, deliberation? Roll call, please.
Lester?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Vote?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Bill passes, 2020-30.
Amending the 2019-2020 and the 2020-2021 budget by reclassifying the Management Assistant Full-Time with Benefits Positions Program Manager, Community Equity Inclusion Manager, Full-Time Position with Benefits within the Department of Parks and Recreation.
Mr. Greffrath?
Thank you. This reclassification is being done as a means to enhance and improve the department by cultivating diversity, equity, and inclusion in community programs, special events, and even within our workforce. Are there any questions?
Any questions? Councilman Fitzwater?
Go ahead. Well, I know Director Spalding is here. Last meeting, I apologize that I didn't ask the question, but this was put together not because of a problem in the past, we're just trying to be proactive to assure that in this environment that we're doing what we're supposed to as a city, is that accurate?
That is 100% correct. We, there is no problem now, we just want to improve, we want to ensure that the future looks bright.
Well, Councilman Graham has me thinking every time I see a dollar amount, I translate it into how much of a police car I can buy, and I know this is parks funds, but I appreciate that clarification.
Councilman Hesey?
Just for clarity, one, how did you draw the short straw tonight with Todd to be here? And, two, I know it's a reclassification, is that, I can't remember, is that a filled position right now or is that a vacant position?
Sure. First, he owes me lunch, and JJ does, too, because he was supposed to be here, so I should have two lunches coming to me, but to answer your question, the management position is a vacant position currently.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, roll call, please.
Vote?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Vote?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Vote?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Motion passes, item 20, any unfinished business, and 21, Councilwoman Wiseman?
I move to adjourn.
Aye.
Where you go, Councilwoman Wiseman?
Say aye.
Aye.
Everybody have a great evening, thank you.